Order the March 26 regular business meeting of City Council. Mr. Shaw, will you lead us in pledge allegiance?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll remind those in attendance, if you wish to speak tonight, there's a sign up sheet for citizens' comment in the back of the room. First item of business is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept it?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five out of eight. Any matters from council members tonight? Mr. Marx?
Me, Mr. Mayor, there was a letter published in the News-Virginian this morning submitted by a citizen who voiced several concerns, some of which I'll be frankly say I didn't quite understand what they were saying. But one of the things concerned, the Florence Avenue Bridge, and their concern that City Council had not spoken to this issue or kept the citizen re-advised of what's going on with the Florence Avenue Bridge. So I would like to ask Mr. Shaw to perhaps give us a, you know, a couple of minutes update on the status of the bridge.
Certainly, be glad to, Ms. Marx. The short answer would be that we currently have design plans that are in the hands of the railroad. As you're well aware, the bridge crosses over CSX railroad tracks. Buckingham Branch is the local operator. As soon as we receive comment back from the railroad, then we would be able to finish those plans in about two weeks, and then we would be able to put the project out to bid. We would advertise, and then it generally takes about two months for construction to start after bids are advertised, and the construction time for this particular bridge should be able to be accomplished within one season, so hopefully by the end of this year. Just to give a little bit of history, as I think you're aware, that in the summer of 2016, we had our, this bridge inspected. This bridge is on an annual inspection, and at that point in time, the bridge engineers informed us that we should start to plan for the restoration or replacement of the bridge, and that we probably had several years to accomplish that, to line up funding and then to do engineering. Engineering for a bridge like this generally takes about a year to accomplish. Shortly thereafter, one of the public works employees was driving over the bridge and noticed a pothole in the bridge. This bridge is constructed with essentially hollow concrete beams, and the bridge inspection can see three of the four sides of that beam, and so where the pothole existed, we could see that the top of the beam had essentially collapsed and was collecting water in the beam. And so, in their caution, the bridge engineering company that we work with advised that we should close the bridge. They gave us several options to more elaborately inspect the bridge, which essentially would entail scraping all of the asphalt off of the top of these beams. And then, at that point, a decision could be made whether to salvage the bridge structure itself. However, that exploration and any repair that would have been done would have been quite expensive and probably not cost effective, considering the overall condition of the bridge. So the bridge was closed in November of 2016. The City Council made $1.6 million application to the Virginia Department of Transportation through their revenue sharing program for bridge replacement. We engaged Schwartz &amp; Associates design engineers to begin a plan for replacement. We were unable to secure revenue sharing funds, so the City Council authorized the use of $1.4 million of surplus funds from the North Delphine widening to be transferred to the Florence Avenue Bridge. And by November of 2017, we had complete design, 75% complete design plans to provide to the railroad and to VDOT for review. And so, at this point, we're essentially hoping that the railroad will soon complete their review so we can move forward with construction this summer.
Well, thank you, Mr. Shaw, and I just want a small follow up to your remarks, and if memory serves me, this is at least the second, if not the third, presentation that's been made in open council meeting with reference to the Florence Avenue Bridge. So I hope that by now, the citizenry understand what situation is with the bridge and that it's progressing along and hopefully will be completed in a, you know, reasonably short period of time hereafter.
Thank you, Mr. Marx. Anyone else?
Just want to congratulate the school board and the school system on a successful demolition, advancing some parcels to ready for the high school renovation project this past week or so, and so appreciate that. And also, too, just want to take the time to acknowledge and show appreciation for our public works crew and the snow removal effort that took place in the recent snowstorm. I've heard just tremendous outpouring of support and appreciation for their work and staff's work in that regard, so just want to acknowledge that.
It was great getting all positive feedback.
It was. It was great.
Of course, it wasn't a 20, 30-inch snow.
Wasn't a 20, it's 3, yeah.
But they did a great job.
They did a great job.
Anything else?
Next Monday is the first Monday of next month, and I still have my council meetings. So if you want to come to Penebri from eight to about 10 till nine next week, because we have our budget presentation at nine here, so, or the library from eight to nine, seven, eight, I'm sorry. So feel free to come and talk about issues.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Anything else? Next is item four, is the presentation of the Waynesboro Public Schools' approved, proposed budget for fiscal year 2019. Dr. Castle, Superintendent of Schools, is here to deliver the presentation. Dr. Castle?
Mayor Allen, members of City Council, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight and talk with you about the budget that the school board has approved for fiscal year 2019. My presentation this year is very different than the last four years. It's been generally the same basic format with some different numbers and some different initiatives, a very different approach this year. Driving the budget development this year is the comprehensive plan of the city of Waynesboro. I'd like to congratulate you and applaud your efforts on that comprehensive plan. I know you've had a lot of work in it, as has the administration of the city and the staff. Mr. Giudice particularly, Mr. Shaw, and Mr. Hamp have had input along with many others. I think on behalf of the school board, I can fairly say that we find it to be very well done, address many topics in the city that will move our city forward, and we are excited about being partners in that. There are many references to public education that I'll highlight some of later in the agenda, and I note on your agenda tonight, you will be adopting the comprehensive plan. Also driving the budget development is a Waynesboro Public Schools' strategic plan. We developed and the school board adopted that in 2016 as a five-year strategic plan running through 2021, aligns very well with the comprehensive plan of the city. In addition to that, the Virginia Department of Education has standards of accreditation and standards of quality that dictate what we do in public education from the state level. The Department of Education, the state Board of Education actually, adopted new standards of accreditation in November of 2017. Those standards of accreditation are generally referred to as the profile of a graduate, and they significantly change what high school students, starting with next year's freshmen, will need to graduate. The requirements for a diploma change, there's a great deal more emphasis on internships and mentorships and workforce development, less emphasis on standardized tests, which most people, I think, would tell you, one test one day does not prepare you for real-life work situations. And finally, the General Assembly and the governor, through the state budget, have a great impact on our budget. What you'll see later is 51% of the revenue is state funds. As you know, we don't yet have a budget, so I'll address that in a minute. From the comprehensive plan, I've pulled out some quotes about Waynesboro putting the future of our children to the top of the agenda, that we will not accept of success in our schools, and acknowledges two particular challenges. Bringing school facilities up to date, and I'll thank you in advance for your actions later tonight of approving a bond sale that will address renovations and upgrades and additions at the high school, and also approving our performance outcomes. As noted in the comprehensive plan, both of these require time and resources, but the impacts from that positive action will differ. This is just a graphic from our strategic plan that outlines six different areas of the school division that all contribute to our real mission of student achievement, and I'll address each of these six briefly as we go through the presentation tonight, and hopefully give you some feel for how the budget impacts each of these areas and the magnitude that that particular area has on the budget, or that the budget has on that area, depending on your viewpoint. These are the standards of accreditation. I won't go into these in great detail. Sue Ryder, Director of Instruction, did a presentation for you, I guess, last month or a couple of weeks ago, about the profile of a graduate and what that means. But as you'll note, in addition to content knowledge, which has really been the basis of SOL testing and the basis of much of what we do in public education, we now are including career planning and workplace skills and the associated educational processes that go with those. That requires some additional personnel and some additional programs. We continue to stress community and civic responsibility. The profile of our graduate addresses that from the state level, even though we address it certainly locally on a daily basis. General Assembly has not adopted a state budget. What we have used in order to balance the budget that you see tonight are the governor's introduced budget for state revenue projections. The governor's revenue projections for Waynesboro are more conservative than the House of Delegates and align pretty closely with the Senate. So it would seem that in a compromise, we might get some additional state revenue. I don't really see a scenario in which we would get less state revenue. None of these budgets, governor's, House of Delegate, or Senate, provides any funding for teacher raises for 2019. You know, they've talked a lot about the teacher shortage in Virginia, not provided any funding to assist with teacher retention and recruitment. State funding is based on our student enrollment, and we are continuing to, I shouldn't say continuing, we're experiencing some enrollment loss this year. Enrollment in Waynesboro, which is our next graph, is a little bit cyclic around the 3,000 number. It's varied, as you can tell, from 3,050 down to 3,000, back to 3,073, down to 30, 40, last year on March 31st. So we'll be funded on our enrollment on March 31st, which is, I guess, Saturday coming up. So really, for us, it was last Friday. The average membership through last Friday is how we're funded for the current school year. So our state funds are adjusted in May and June to account for that enrollment. We are working on a budget of 30, 40. Our March 31st membership will probably be lower than any of those numbers. I'm guessing when we finish running reports, it will be in the 29, 70 range. We have projected enrollment for next year. We believe that will improve some. We have a very small senior class, and it appears that we will have a more normal trending kindergarten enrollment. So as you graduate a small senior class, bring in a class of kindergarteners that's more in line with other enrollments, that should go back over 3,000. So we've used 3,000 as our budgeting number for next year. That does impact state funding, though, to the tune of about $5,200 per student, so that's a couple hundred thousand dollars. The budget development process, on February 13th in this chamber, I presented a needs-based budget to the school board. That needs-based budget addressed the needs that were identified to support the school board's strategic plan and areas of needs identified in the city's comprehensive plan. Acknowledging at the time that we didn't necessarily believe we would get there in one year, we didn't end up in this spot in the comprehensive plan, it refers sometimes to catching up, sometimes to keeping up, and sometimes to getting ahead. We're keeping up in some areas, and we've got catching up to do in some areas. And so we've tried to identify those, acknowledging that this is maybe a multi-year process, but so that the school board and the city has an idea of what our needs are to support both the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan. Last week, on March 20th, the school board approved a balanced budget. That budget generally replicates this year's budget. There's not much difference from this year to next year in that budget, and we'll talk some more about that as I go through the presentation. And of course, tonight, I'm presenting to you a balanced budget. The budget priorities identified by the school board are teacher recruitment and retention. We believe the best way to do that is to improve our compensation. Student support, that's supporting our students' social, emotional, and behavioral needs first, so that they can learn, so that they are in school and they are prepared to participate in the many programs we have, and access the curriculum and instructional strategies that we're providing through many different programs. And finally, facility maintenance. We have some ongoing maintenance needs, as any large organization with seven campuses and numerous buildings have, and some preventive maintenance needs that we want to both continue and even expand, we believe, to improve the life of our equipment and provide more efficient operation in the years to come. I'm going to talk about each of the six areas of the strategic plan individually. I won't read all of these to you, and I'll try to do this fairly quickly because I have several slides tonight. It's a long presentation, longer than you're accustomed to from me, anyway. Instruction is the core of what we do, and it's a very people-intensive business that we have. Our business is about teachers, instructional assistants, as well as our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, our custodians, our maintenance people, and our administrators. So there's many people supporting that, but ultimately, it comes down to the teachers and the aides who are in the classroom. Waynesboro Public Schools is the largest employer in the city of Waynesboro. It's not uncommon to find that the school division is the largest employer in many localities. I spoke briefly about this profile of a graduate. The new concepts of career planning and workforce development for high school students are key elements of that profile of a graduate, and those require both additional personnel with expertise in areas that are a bit different for us. The idea of having people who really have expertise and experience in career planning and workforce development is a slightly different skill set than we've sought previously as we were hiring for our high school program. We may have some of those, but we'll need to expand those programs, and expand the programs at our high school in order to be successful, and place students in mentorships, internships, externships, so that they can have experiences before they leave school. Instruction, as a part of these six different elements, comprises the majority of our budget. 77% of the operating budget directly goes to instruction. Under student services, we tell you that we find increasingly need for additional personnel to provide for the increasingly intensive needs of our students, particularly at preschool and elementary. We've had some alternative programs and regional programs to serve high school students. We've expanded those this year at middle school, expanded last year a middle school program, piloting another middle school program, alternative program, this year that is in fact reflected in the budget for next year, to provide opportunities for our students. But we continue to look at expanding preschool programs for our most at-risk students. We have found in research supports that as sooner we can get students who have higher needs or are more at risk due to poverty or social factors, the more we can assure that they're ready to learn when they come to school. There's legislation this year that's been passed, a couple of different pieces of legislation that prohibits suspension of students. Keeping all students in school will require some additional programs, different programs, and possibly additional personnel. We don't like to suspend students, but there are students who disrupt the learning environment and the integrity of our educational facilities, and we just have to remove those from the general classroom settings at times. So between student services and instruction, what you're seeing is the same slide that I used on February 12th, or February 13th, I'm sorry, on February 13th, when we had a needs-based budget. The red has been updated to reflect the balanced budget. At that time, we believed that there would be increased costs associated with the regional programs. At this point, that's still to be determined. Most likely, that will be the case, although if you really look line by line at our budget, you'll see purchase services has gone up. Another line with regional programs appears to have gone down. That's because we did not assume a 1.5% raise, that it appears Augusta County is going to provide teachers, and 3% in Stanton. These regional programs are located as regional partnerships, and so teachers will receive their rates based on the fiscal agent. That will cause our costs to go up some. Personnel costs, for all personnel in the division, comprise 80% of our operating budget. As I said earlier, we're very people-intensive, so most of the budget goes to salaries and benefits. The original budget that I proposed involved adding five teaching positions and five aid positions for instructional and student support. We've removed all of those with the exception of special education, a part-time English language, and instructional assistance for special needs students that we've added this year that we'll have to continue to provide next year. At the bottom, you'll find some quotes from the Waynesboro City's comprehensive plan, talking about the number of children who are entering Waynesboro Elementary not coming poised to succeed. Significant number of those children not doing well in the basics. The need for additional personnel to address the special learning challenges of students at K. Collins, and high school students not graduating at high enough rates. We're seeing our graduation rate improve. I believe we'll continue to see that improve throughout this year. We can attribute a lot of that to a program called the Virginia Tiered Systems of Support that we started three years ago at middle and high school, and we're seeing results from that in graduation rates and student attendance. Both instruction and student services, as I've said, are very people-intensive. It's all about the folks that we have in the classrooms and in our buildings as administrators and teachers. Competitive salaries are critical. I've already commented about the 80% of the operating budget. The original budget that I proposed on February 13 included a 3% raise for employees. The balanced budget does not contemplate any rates. It maintains salary scales for FY '19 as they are for fiscal year '18. Again, the comprehensive plan addresses teacher compensation and the need to compete more effectively. This is a graph with a lot of information that I'm not going to talk about right now, but that you can take home and get your magnifying glass out and study a little bit closer, or your reading glasses, maybe. I just couldn't get it on the paper, the sheet, any better. This information comes from the Virginia Education Association, which surveys salaries around the state. It has the 10 localities closest to us. This numbering of 1 to 10 is not a ranking, okay? That's, those were just numbered up. Should have taken them out, but I just didn't figure out how to do that today. What is a ranking across the bottom is of those 10 localities, Waynesboro ranks 7, 8, 7. There's a 6 at year 15, back to 8, and at the 30-year mark, we go to 5 in the middle. Frankly, I don't know that Waynesboro will ever be able to top this list when we're competing against places like Almaral County and Nelson County across the mountain, but I would like for us to be certainly in the middle, in the 3, 4, 5, 6, not in the 5, 6, 7, 8. We've got catching up to do in this area. This is the same information comparing us to our three closest neighbors that we compete with, Augusta County, Stanton, and Waynesboro. As you'll see, we're continuing to lag behind those localities until we get to the top of the pay scale, and at year 30, we are leading in that. We'll use this information as we address salary scales and look at the areas that we specifically need to target, particularly including starting salaries and the salaries of our teachers early in their career. This is a history of raises given in the last five years. We've managed to give a raise each of the last three years, and then that was tough. I'll acknowledge the City Council funding us above our funding formula last year in order to give a 1% raise. The city funded us, funded the school division $172,000 above the funds that would have been provided through our funding formula. Competing with Stanton is becoming increasingly difficult to keep up. They've again approved a budget with a 3% raise. Augusta County approved just last week a budget with a 1.5% raise for teachers with at least what was reported by the news. If additional funds become available, that could increase. Again, we have Again, we have not included in this balanced budget a raise. Some statistics about our students that impact instruction and the services we provide. Our free and reduced lunch rate continues to increase. That's the measure of poverty that the federal government and the Virginia Department of Education uses. It's now sixty-one point one-one percent. School divisions over sixty percent are considered school divisions with particularly high needs and at-risk students. Special education population continues to increase now with three hundred and fifty students identified needing special education services, requiring specialized personnel. Our English language learners has increased as well, now serving two hundred and nineteen L. students, from a hundred and ninety last year, one eighty-six the year before, so pretty significant gain this year. Another report from the Department of Education that I'll let you analyze on your own time, but it shows local per pupil expenditure, state, state sales tax, federal, in total of the ten, same ten school divisions. It's the locality where you're ranking eighth, fourth from the state. We do rank first at the federal. I'll compliment the staff of the school division. We work very hard to apply for grants. When you have sixty percent free and reduced lunch rate or sixty percent poverty rate, makes you eligible for some grants. So we do receive fair amount of federal funds, and some of those funds are based on the fact that we have a high poverty rate, things like Title I. We did apply for and receive a Title IV grant. I'll move to Staff Development, which is a third of the strategic plan items. We received a grant from the state for Virginia Tiered System of Support three years ago, also called behavior, positive behavior interventions. Without getting into the details, that's a program that we've implemented at Waynesboro High and K. Collins. It's kind of changing the idea of how teachers deal with students and administrators and helping our students to recognize the value of school and attending school. As I mentioned earlier, we've found great success with this program with reducing absenteeism, students becoming more engaged in our building, more active participants in the learning process. We're seeing increased test scores as a result of that, but more importantly, less student behavior referrals resulting in less suspensions, keeping students in school, and reduced absenteeism. Our elementary administrators and teachers hear about this and wanted to expand that program to the elementary schools. We used Title IV grant funds to do that this year, to begin to implement that. Those funds will not be available next year. We, in the original February 13 budget, there was funds to continue these programs in elementary next year. We've not eliminated this from our budget. This is one of two items that we felt very strongly about, and was very important. We have reduced the funds allocated to this in the balanced budget, but continue to maintain the program in a reduced sense in, for the, for our elementary schools. The city plan acknowledges that closely tied to the city's changing demographics, students come to school from difficult family situations, unprepared to succeed. Transcency is really a challenge to us, both with keeping students and to keep our best teachers. As students come and go, when you don't have the same students in May that you started the year with in September, it's very difficult to measure and acknowledge the success of those students. Our technology is a fourth area of the strategic plan. We've received a grant called the E-Backpack Learning Program. That's a grant for Waynesboro High School in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The state of Virginia provides eighty percent of that funding, and we provide twenty percent. So our match is something like twenty-three thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand. I don't remember the exact number, but with this grant, we will have reached our initiative of having a device in each student's hands from grade five through twelve, a one-to-one initiative that we've been able to implement over the last five years using primarily grant funds. We do have the local funding for our part of the twenty percent match included in the budget, although we did reduce other technology expenditures in order to make that balance. This is an important part of the profile of a graduate, the idea that our students are able to demonstrate productive workforce skills, which are, to enter the workforce, students have to have strong and up-to-date technology skills with, if not the latest equipment, certainly modern equipment, and be able to apply that academic and technical Capital improvements is the fifth of our strategic plan elements. I'll thank you tonight for your impending vote on the bond issue to start work on the renovation and addition at Waynesboro High School to modernize that facility. But we have six other campuses with multiple buildings that just require maintenance from time to time. An aging bus fleet also requires additional maintenance. We have twenty-six regular bus runs, should be on a bus replacement cycle of about two each year. We have not been replacing buses on a regular cycle over the last few years. The budget that, the needs-based budget contemplated some funds to address these operating costs and some capital improvements at our building. All of those were eliminated in the balanced budget. Just a quick overview, so that... I want, the point I want to have here is, as we implement the comprehensive plan and our strategic plan over the next few years, I think these are some of the, this would be a budget that we would need to be able to do that and to implement the kinds of changes or additions that will help us to achieve those goals. The revenues, state revenue increased by about fifty-six thousand dollars. Our federal revenue increased thirty-seven. Other funds are funds we generate ourselves through things like Medicaid reimbursement for services that we provide to students, rental of our facilities to groups, rental of cell tower, transportation costs for which were reimbursed in some programs. And then the funding formula of the city. The funding formula of the city generated two hundred and forty thousand dollars of additional revenue this year over last year. But as I mentioned earlier, you, the city council, appropriated an additional one hundred and seventy-two thousand last year above the funding formula so that we could give the one percent raise, so the difference this year from last year shows then a sixty-seven thousand dollars, okay? Not the two hundred and forty. That's a total increase of one eighty-eight. Had we done three percent raise, salaries would have increased nine hundred and thirty-five thousand. These benefits are associated to salaries, FICA and VRS costs, and non-salary would have increased close to half a million dollars for a total increase of one point six. That left us out of balance at one point five million dollars. Again, not that we expected to reach that this year, but to attach a price tag to implementing the topics identified in the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan. On March twentieth, the balanced budget that the school board approved has the same revenue. The state revenue didn't change, although we expect that it will when the budget is approved, and that will account for about half of our revenue. Federal, we don't expect to change. This actually went down ten thousand dollars. We were able to do a more accurate projection, we believed, of Medicaid reimbursements after our most recent reimbursement we received in March, and it was not as much as we expected, so we lowered that ten thousand dollars. City funds did not change. In order to balance the budget, the salaries increased a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. That does have K. Three class size reduction and a special education position that we added this year that we'll need to carry in next year in additional instructional assistance. Benefits decreased because of VRS rate went down. It decreased, so the cost of our benefits decreased. And non-salary has a slight increase of seventy-two thousand. That's, there's some areas that decreased, there's others that increased. That just fluctuates, things like insurance, property and casualty, and workers' comp insurance. We know we'll have an increase in that, so we've calculated that in. It also reflects the VTSS program and the technology grant that I mentioned. That gives us a balanced budget at thirty-six million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. I'll go back to our budget priorities of teacher recruitment, retention, student support, and facility maintenance. If we were to receive additional local funds, we will commit to providing those to provide raises for our school employees. And any additional state funds, assuming they're not designated by the state for a specific use, would be used to provide raises for school employees, possibly to add positions if it becomes necessary because of state regulations regarding K. Three class size, special education, or some other instructional program or area that we find a need for additional instructional or support personnel. Think that leads to the question of, what does raise cost? We've projected out the cost of raises for employees. This cost does include associated costs of paying FICA and VRS, which is based on the credible compensation. One percent costs about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, two percent about five hundred and twenty-four thousand, and three percent, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand This is the operating fund summary, which is included in the notebook that I provided for you as section two. It's just a slide showing the revenue that's thirty-six, five fifty-one, and the operating that's the same with the balanced budget. This is also included in section two and is more readable. These show state fund, state revenue funds. This page shows federal funds, local funds, and the funds provided by the locality broken down by various categories. For example, each of the federal grants that we receive are highlighted here. Likewise, for expenditure, there's expenditure costs for salaries, for benefits, and finally, for the non-salaried, purchase services, utilities, all the different, technology instruction, all the different projects. As I said, salaries and benefits account for eighty percent of the budget. Everything over here that we do in terms of utilities, transportation, maintenance, supplies, and materials account for about twenty percent. I've included our mission statement of being committed to a quality education with a strong academic program designed to meet our students' needs, comprehensive programs to prepare and encourage students to be productive citizens, quality learning environments in school facilities, and diverse, highly-trained staff committed to working effectively with youth and strong partnerships with parents and the community. We believe the budget priorities support the mission statement. That's my presentation. We're proud of Waynesboro Public Schools, which we affectionately refer to the Little Giants as a little community with giant opportunities. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Dr. Castle, I got a question for you, and it's not a trick question either. I'm not, because you know, I think through our meetings over the last year and a half or whatever, I'm, you know, supportive renovations and trying to make our schools better and what they should be.
Absolutely.
But I've asked you the question before, if we had the finished product at the high school today, and if we'd had it for this last year, that wouldn't guarantee a better grade level coming out of the end. I know you've told me you think there would, there would be a difference, and I'm sure that just a difference in sometimes driving my old car and driving my wife's car, I know how I feel better driving her car, so I understand that. But to make it clear to people that listen, that's a piece of the puzzle. It's not, with the new school and the new buildings, that's not going to solve your problems. You have a lot of other problems, and you've shared with us and went through it tonight. But that's my question. Would that make, would that make a grade level, one grade level difference?
No, sir, it would not. Improving our high school, I think, improves our city. I think it improves our image outside of the city to people who are moving here, who want to come here. It's, I can't stand in front of you and say capital improvements at a high school are going to have a significant difference on student achievement. I think they will have some difference on student achievement. I think we'll have better technology and better learning environments, and there's a lot of research that will say there is, there's improved student achievement in a more pleasing and aesthetic learning environment, but I can't make that statement with certainty to you. What I can say is that I think it may help to improve our enrollment. We see enrollment drop some as we get to middle school and sometimes again toward high school, and I can't say that's entirely due to the facility, but I think it may be related. But I think what it does do is, one of the things we find as people who are interested in moving to our community are exploring their options for places to live, is they'll ask to come visit the schools. And based on the age of their children or students, they'll want to visit an elementary, sometimes in a certain area. They'll want to visit the middle school, and they'll want to visit the high school. Whether I like it or not, or we like it or not, we get compared at that point to what other places have. And the facility, I believe, with these renovations and additions, will become a 21st century building, maintaining the architectural design of previous generations outside, but be a very modern building inside, and that's what we don't have now.
And I agree with you, but just, I would hate when it's a finished product for somebody to come to me and go, you spent all that money, and there's no, no improvement here. And I'm hoping that everything, all the pieces of the puzzle put together is going to show an improvement, and I have nothing but good things to say about our school system and about its employees, so that that's not where I'm going with it. I'd just like to be honest and upfront with people. On the slide where you were showing the free and reduced lunches, and I know we're, we seem to climb and climb, how do we compare to other jurisdictions with that?
We would be the highest in the area, and I believe, I believe we would be the highest of the ten school divisions that I showed you. I couldn't say that with certainty. Possibly Harrisonburg might be close to where we are, but I don't, I believe they would be in the fifty percent, not in the, not in the sixty-one. And for example, Alamo Marl, I believe, has thirty-four percent free and reduced lunch in their county.
Other jurisdictions, through your travels and going to conferences, have they been able to show a better decline in that area, or is it, or they stay where they at, and we just happen to be growing more?
That's a tough question. I don't know that I have an answer. I will say this. I think it's fair to say, based on my experience and observation, cities have higher concentrations of poverty than counties do because cities provide more resources for people living in poverty. You tend to be able to have subsidized housing, to get, find cheaper housing in cities, or more opportunities for housing vouchers or subsidized housing that you don't find in counties, especially if they're very rural. If you don't own a vehicle, there's public transportation in the city, or things like grocery stores and corner markets and Dollar Generals, and shopping is within walking distance, and it's not if you're in a county that's very rural. So I think you'll find that cities tend to have, and I believe Waynesboro, Stanton, Harrisonburg, Winchester, other cities, Roanoke, would, would show that there are higher poverty rates than there are in, in counties. Now, I do think that can be re- Now, I do think that can be reduced. If you make improvements to your city, improvements to, um, rental housing and, and housing, then that may lessen the influx or the increase in poverty to, to a city. I think that's a problem that I'm not probably ever really well-qualified to answer, certainly not to not, that's obviously a problem bigger than just the school system, but I understand your question.
And I notice in some of the schools, and you talk about special need students and having a personnel person to be there with them throughout the day, uh, that, that's not a cheap add-on to your normal school system, is it?
No, sir, that's very expensive. We continue to expand our participation in regional programs. We became a participant in Shenandoah Valley Regional Program two years ago for special education. That's a program that's been around for twenty-eight years. Waynesboro had not participated, and we became a participant in that two years ago. That provides us with the opportunity for additional services and more economical services for some of our very specialized, students with very specialized needs and, and really high-needs students. So, um, those are very expensive services, um, that we provide, but we continue to try to minimize the, be more efficient in those costs.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Jeff, you want to start off?
Yeah, I was just, um, you mentioned that we haven't replaced buses, and we should replace about every, every couple of year. Is that going to jump up and bite us, so to speak?
The, the Department of Education recommends that buses be replaced every fifteen years. They assign a value, a fifteen-year life to a bus as a capital asset. With twenty-six regular run buses, then we would need to replace, on average, two a year, maybe not two every year, but, um, the cost of a bus is about a hundred thousand dollars. You really can't get that much cheaper. Now, you can add on to that and pay one-twenty-five for a bus, but about a hundred thousand. We've bought two new buses in the five years I've been in Waynesboro with some end-of-year funds. To answer your question, yes, Mr. Freeman, at some point, we're going to have to pay for that. You see higher costs reflected in our repair lines. A transmission for a bus is about eight thousand dollars, a new motor's about ten thousand. I will say this, we've not bought new buses, but we were able to purchase, three years ago, six buses that, um, Prince William County had traded in, and they were low-mileage buses and fairly late-model buses. They apparently had phones and are on a replacement cycle and stuck to it, and so we purchased some of those buses, um, for around the cost of a new motor, frankly, for a little under ten thousand dollars. And last year, Henrico County had us trade in as well, and we were able to purchase, I believe we purchased three buses last year. So we've upgraded our fleet some, um, with some, I would say, low-mileage, later-model used buses, but I believe that was a very, um, efficient use of funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I've got a, I've got a few. So the first question I had would, um, are related to Mayor's question about special education for your reduced lunch. Do, to what degree, if any, and I'm kind of hitting you cold with this question, but, are those, those increases associated with changing standards and changing definitions?
Um, I would say they're not. The, the definition, the, the identification criteria for special need students for special education, um, has not changed significantly in the last few years. The increased identification, I think, is just due to, for whatever reason, increased incidence of that. A change in regulation would have resulted in identification of students across all grade level. This increased number of students results from two things. We've noted that, and I don't know the reason, but we have noted that a number of students who move to our division and enter school seem to come with an IEP, the Individualized Education Plan for Special Education, and we're bound by that document, that legal document, that individual education plan for that student when they arrive. And so, um, not completely sure why that is, but we're seeing an increasing number of students that move here with IEPs, a disproportional number, I would tell you. More of our new students have IEPs percentage-wise than of our currently enrolled students. And increasingly, we're seeing students enter school needing those special services. Some have been identified before they ever enter school at age two or three or four, and in early elementary, we're having stuff with, um, often medical diagnosis that then result in a, in identification, a special education identification. Autism spectrum is one that's increased significantly. Dramatic brain injuries would almost certainly, that medical diagnosis would lead to a IEP. Speech language is another.
Okay, thank you. Different, different subject, but what's, what's, and I'm, it's probably, I'm sure it's in here, um, what, what, just off the top of your head, if you can, what's the projected end-of-year fund balance?
I don't know projected end-of-year. I would not expect it to be significant. In fact, I would expect it to be minimal based on the enrollment loss. We budgeted at three thousand forty, we're going to come in at three thousand seventy. We've been monitoring that all year. So we report a September thirtieth number, and the state adjusts our funding for the year based on that. Then we report a March thirty-first, and the final adjustment is made. Our September thirtieth number, I don't recall exactly, but was in that twenty-nine-seventy range, and that's not fluctuated a good deal since. I think enrollment last week, um, was twenty-nine-sixty-eight. So we've been adjusting throughout the year to account for that enrollment loss and following our financials, and so I would not expect a fund balance.
Okay. You'd mentioned about compensation increases to go to, to, well, I guess a more of a question, rather I shouldn't say, instead of what you said. I just wanted to repeat what I thought I heard, that, um, one potential strategy for the school division may be to, if additional, um, funds were made available, to focus compensation used to a targeted teacher population.
I think one of the things that we would consider, let me, because there's not, I don't have a definitive answer to this. I have, and I believe the school board has, and certainly the Personnel and Human Resource Department, it's very concerning that our starting salary is the lowest in the area and lags pretty significantly behind. And that's true really through step ten, the ten years of experience on our salary scale. School divisions work differently than other organizations, and it's very unique, but all school divisions do it based on years of experience, step scale as we would call it. Particularly, our steps one through ten are lagging behind, so it becomes hard to recruit teachers or even retain if you're hiring first or second-year teachers. So we, while we need to address all levels of compensation, the lower parts of our, the lower steps in our scale are of particular concern. So, and as you saw, at the top of our pay scale, we're competing very, very well. I think as teachers get to that twenty or whatever, twenty-five year, that's a goal to, that's a reason to stay with us and complete your tenure here at a, at that higher salary. So I can't, I can't show you a solution to that, but I think there are solutions that we're certainly interested in exploring that might address different steps on the pay scale differently than just some broad sweep of everybody gets some percent of raise.
Great, that's helpful, thank you.
We've, I'll add just a little more to that. We've looked at a number of different scenarios. It's pretty time-consuming to do that, and, um, right now, as you're probably aware, both the city and the school division are running test payrolls in the new financial system. The payroll's pretty important to us, too, so we're spending some time on that and have, once we know a little more what our state budget and local funds are, we'll explore those scales.
Was Governor Northam's amended budget, was that any very different than Governor Collins?
I've not been able to, the Department of Education provides us with usually about ten days after they see a budget from the governor or the House or delegates or Senate, a very specific line-by-line of what that means for your school division. We've not received that, and from what I've been able to read, I've not been able to ascertain that there's anything considerably different in it, but I, I don't know that with certainty.
And then the last one was more of a, of a request, if possible, if y'all could, just no hurry, but, um, so I love numbers. And so it'd be curious to me if, if, um, if it's easy to ascertain, um, in similar sort of graphic that you had for, um, changing overall ADM, um, over, since like twenty-thirteen?
Yes, yes.
To, to break that out by student subset populations, so like a K, K through third or pre-K through third, third through fifth, sixth through eighth, and nine through twelve. Only, only because I think that would help, if we could do that in the same sort of a timeframe, sort of help predict what enrollment may look like, or what, if, if there's enrollment spikes in, in pre-K through third and third through fifth, um, that we want to keep those kids in the school system. So, so that, I would be curious about those trends.
We can do that.
Mr. Mark?
Dr. Castle, I had the opportunity to hear a presentation here a week or two ago about mentoring and volunteer, uh, contributions by the citizens to help students who may be having trouble keeping up with the basics and so forth, and I thought it might be helpful if you could, you know, uh, respond to that as to how that's working and how it might be of even more help if, if we had more such assistance.
I'm happy to, Mr. Marks. I think what you're referring to is our tutoring program at William Perry Elementary. That's our largest elementary school, it's about five-hundred-and-twenty students. William Perry has not been accredited based on their lower reading and primarily reading scores, although math scores are not as high as we would like. It's also a higher-poverty school with free and reduced lunch rates into seventy-something percent. We implemented, starting in the summer and this year, a tutoring program there. We actually used some Title I grant funds to hire a retired teacher to work part-time, a few hours a week, Ms. Krickenberger, to, um, organize and support that program. That, I think that's a perfect example of a program that requires some resources, but a small investment of resource in the right place can yield huge results. And in fact, I think that was one of the things that I started with one of your quotes from your comprehensive plan, that different investment of resources will yield different results. Over the years, we've had volunteers, but people would show up at school and say, hey, I want to volunteer, and we'd try to figure out something for them to do, and it might be a bulletin board, it might be reading with kids. Ms. Krickenberger worked with the staff in the Instruction and Student Support Department with the principal at William Perry to identify students who she, they felt most could benefit from tutoring, from that relationship with, with, um, an adult in the building, and to identify that student's area of need and their potential, and then she gathered materials. So if you were reading below grade level, if you're, say, a third grader and you're reading on first grade, she gathered a series of books and reading materials that are appropriate for that student to help them to reach their potential. And I don't know the schedule, but it's several days a week, either during school or immediately after school that these students stay, and so the volunteers begin to come in and get involved in that tutoring program. A public library donated books for the program. There've been some other donations to the program as well, but, and I don't, I'd be honest, I've lost track of what the number of volunteers is now, but it's a significant number of people who are coming on a regular basis, and they come either one or two days a week for an hour. We've also identified a time that they can tutor their students so they're not missing reading or math, but they're coming out, and the reports are just glowing. It's, the students are coming to school, they're enjoying being there, they've got a positive role model, somebody to talk to, and somebody who's checking in on them if they're not there, holding them accountable some. Students are attending school better, they're making progress in their reading. It's just, it's almost a model program. In fact, we submitted it to present at some conferences and some other events, and hope to expand it next year to some of our other buildings. That would be one of the elements of the VTSS that we talked about. You need a little bit of funds there for that person to, to organize and supervise the program. But it is a, it's a great example of community involvement. And again, I can't predict test scores, but I'll be really surprised and disappointed if our test scores at William Perry don't show results from that. Now, if they don't, I go back to, that's one test one day, and that's not real life anyway. Those kids and the adults there have had a great experience, whether it's reflecting their test scores.
Let me put a plug in for Ms. Krickenberger. She came to the Lions Club and did a presentation, and one of the questions was, well, maybe I'm not qualified to teach today as, uh, we were taught different, and she said that they have a little training program and templates for you to use and make it pretty easy, and it's, it could be kind of hard for somebody like myself to go in and mess it up, if, get to volunteer for that. So a very positive, uh, program, and, uh, look forward to participating in it somehow.
Ms. Krickenberger's the perfect example of having the right person in the right place. I, I call it having the right seat, right person in the right seat on the bus.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anything else?
I have a quick question. Has there been conversation about providing free lunch to element, all of the elementary schools at least, or at least?
So that's called the Community Eligibility Program, and when you reach a certain level of students, then you can expand that to where breakfast and lunch is offered free to all students, there's no application process. Currently, our Wayne Hills Preschool Program and Winona both participate. This is the second year for Wayne Hills. It's our first year for Winona to participate in that program. We found it to be very successful. The interesting part of that is the participation goes up, and that's, the basis of the program is that there are students who should be accessing free breakfast and lunch and are not doing so. With community eligibility, there's no application process, there's nobody identified or not identified if you want to eat, and our participation has gone up significantly, which would suggest that, in fact, there are hungry kids. I don't think I'm getting ahead of myself in such a sense to say we're exploring that for William Perry next year. That would be the next school. Would that be accurate? That would be the next most obvious school to, to expand that program to, and, uh, I would say most likely would do that for next year.
And there's nothing outside of that program that could provide free lunch for the kids?
Not really. The USDA regulations are so cumbersome around who gets lunch and who doesn't, and the parameters of that, that it's, um, really, we never turn students away. You may read about, and there's actually some legislation this year about, we feed kids, especially at the elementary schools. If a kid who hasn't paid their bill, it's not the kid's fault that the bill's not paid. So we make sure everybody eats, but it becomes a little clunky in the federal regulations when we do that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Castle.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Item 5A is the second consideration of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a general obligation debt not to exceed 21.5 million in principal for the Waynesboro High School project. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At its February 13th meeting, Waynesboro School Board passed a resolution requesting city council fund the renovation of the Waynesboro High School, $21 million renovation of the Waynesboro High School. At your March 12th council meeting, you held a public hearing to receive comment on that proposition to borrow, to issue bonds in the amount not to exceed 21.5 million dollars. Tonight, we have two actions prepared for you that would be required to issue those bonds. The first is an ordinance that you introduced at that March 12th meeting, and tonight you can consider it for a second reading. And the ordinance basically provides the authorization to incur the debt. It's a general obligation bond of the city, and it pledges the city's full faith and credit and full taxing power as security for the bonds. The second matter would be to pass a bond resolution, which provides more, the details of more specific mechanism for the borrowing through the Virginia Public School Authority. And the bond resolution details maximum acceptable terms of the council in the borrowing. You do have to consider these as two separate items. Both recall, or both will require roll call vote. Mr. Chris Culp, who's the city's bond counsel, is here with us this evening, and either Mr. Culp or I would be glad to answer any questions you have about either of these actions.
Is there any discussion on this? This requires a roll call vote for this one, Mrs. Board.
Mayor Allen?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Short?
Aye.
Councilman Marks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
It carries 5A, thank you. Item 5B is to consider adopting a resolution providing for the issuance of general obligation school bonds in the city of Waynesboro, Virginia, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 21,500,000 to be sold. Mr. Shaw?
Again, Mr. Al, Mayor Allen, the resolution really outlines a specific mechanism for the borrowing through the Virginia Public School Authority and the maximum acceptable terms to the city. It also requires roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Are there any questions from council members? If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. No other questions? Then we'll have a roll call vote, Ms. Board.
Mayor Allen?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Short?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Marks?
Aye.
It carries 5A also, thank you. Item 6 is the second consideration of an ordinance adopting the 2018 Comprehensive Plan for the city. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think by now you're quite familiar with the Comprehensive Plan and hopefully its content. We've worked for more than a year as a community and as a professional organization to produce this plan. You introduced an ordinance at your last meeting to consider adoption. Tonight, you've been prepared to conclude the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. The ordinance was introduced on March 12th and requires a second tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there any discussion? I think, I'd just like to say a few things under the discussion of the Comprehensive Plan. When Charles, the consultant, gave his presentation of it, I kind of came away from that meeting with a bad taste in my mouth, the way it was presented. Felt like it kind of showed Waynesboro as a backward city and a city that hasn't done anything, that hasn't tried to move forward. I just didn't think I quite agreed with it. Mr. Jude, when he gave his presentation, kind of cleaned it up a little bit, but I'm still not satisfied with where I'm sitting at. Talks about how we've been lax and not done things, and I think the last time that we had it updated to the comp plan was in 2008, if that's correct, Mr. Shaw?
Yes, sir.
And these are plans that try to give us some guidance of where we'd like to go. But at the time in 2008 with the plan that we did pass, Mr. Shaw, I'd like just give some examples of, about what percentage of that plan did we accomplish?
Well, it's curious that during the Comprehensive Plan process, we went through an exercise for the Steering Committee where we examined plans from really the 1998 Comprehensive Plan forward, through the 2008 Land Use Guide and several other plans. And I would say that we, we got a good, healthy B on things. We probably accomplished somewhere around 80, 85% of the various major strategies, bearing in mind that comprehensive plans provide both specific actionable goals and strategies as well as overriding policy goals. And those are policies against which you judge your decisions. And again, I feel like we accomplished a great many more of the things, we were bound to the plan more tightly than I think often people give us credit. Now, I'm a professional planner by education and trade, and I'm willing to concede that sometimes the things that we put on, in plans, as time goes on, we realize weren't things that were either important enough or that were enduring priorities. And sometimes we might be, look back and be glad that we didn't accomplish everything that's in a plan. But that having been said, I feel like the, the exercise that we went through demonstrated that in fact, we've, we have pursued the development of a greenway, we pursued the renovations of libraries, we've made incredible strides in the area of improving water, sewer, and stormwater, basic infrastructure. And, and there were really quite a number of things that were relevant to downtown redevelopment that were accomplished. There were a number of things that were relevant to the development of an economic development department and program, and a tourism department and program. I think there were quite a number of the issues that were related to land use, to which we adhered. In 1998, the West End had not developed as we know it now, that, and Mr. Mayor and many of you will recall that basically you got to where the LAD school, former LAD school and 711R, and, and then you were in farmland and farm fields to source draft. And in the 1998 plan, and again by 2008, the city outlined guidance for the development of that area as a, as a commercial and interstate oriented area. And so I know I'm rambling a bit, but I think, you know, I hear this as well, that we adopt plans and we let them sit on shelves. Well, the, you know, the fact of the matter was that in many cases, and in most cases, we pursued important initiatives of those plans. And I think there were certainly things in 1998 that we didn't accomplish in the first five or even 10 years of the adoption of the plan. But these are 20-year plans. These, these are plans that we adopt for 20-year horizon, and then we revisit them periodically as, as need be. And so it was curious to me that in 1998, there was a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion about stormwater management. And it was because I think those of us who were around at that time, the professional staff, could see that, that the wave of stormwater regulation was headed our way, that there were many regulations at that time in the Commonwealth that only applied to communities of a population of 100,000 or more, but we were being told that those regulations would start to apply to communities of 50,000, and eventually to communities of 25,000, and eventually to a community like Waynesboro. And, and that did come to pass. Now, we weren't, you know, prophets, we, you know, we were just people that were tuned to the canons of our profession, and we saw the wave coming. And so my hope would be that you will look at this plan in similar regard and say that there are things in this plan that if accomplished, will benefit and serve this community well. And I think that there are things that you can do in the near future that you're already discussing, development of Sunset Park, the development of an industrial park in Waynesboro, the renovation of a high school, improvements to public education generally, that, you know, we can pursue in the near future. However, the plan itself also calls for a pretty aggressive spending program, and I can't as an administrator or as an urban planner tell you with certainty that we will have the resources to pursue the entirety of that document in the next year, five years, 10 or 20 years, that this is a plan that will take us time. And the measure of its adequacy will be our persistence and our willingness to pursue it and to amend it as need be in the future.
Well, that's, I think I asked you a question, and I don't know if you told me whether or not you could give me an answer, if we did everything in the comp plan, just where our tax rate would have to go to, to, to perform that total plan as it's presented to us tonight.
It would have to be a lot higher than it is today. Now, I know we went through an exercise with the Steering Committee during the last summer where we looked at the various initiatives that were being discussed, and bearing in mind that at that point in time, we were considering, for instance, the full renovation as proposed of the Waynesboro High School of $50 million renovation. But we looked at improvements to, to infrastructure and public safety, and all of the relevant issues discussed in the plan. And it was about an $80 million spending program. And that would put the city basically at its maximum borrowing capacity. And I think the Steering Committee and the folks working on it rightfully recognized that that was a plan that was overly aggressive for the resource available in the city. And so I think the effort was made then to start to try to put that into perspective over time, and to look at it and say that, you know, that as Mr. Jude said during his presentation, that we can do anything in the plan, but you might not be able to do everything in the plan, and you certainly wouldn't be able to do it in a short period of time. So, I mean, if you consider that basically, you know, that the, you know, the borrowing we're taking on now of $20 million creates about $1.4 million in debt service, and that's somewhere in the neighborhood of about eight cents on your tax rate. So if you were to multiply that by four, it gives you some sense of where your tax rate would have to be to, to go out and incur about $80 million of debt.
Well, and I don't want people to think that I'm against the, the content of the plan. I think everything in there is positive, other than the way that the plan's going to be paid for. And I realize that the more improvements we make in our community, and the more improvements we make to our residents, the more value that they should bring. But as the more value they bring, that's just more tax dollars that's going to come out of the residential or the businesses' pockets to go into the coffers for the city. And, and that in itself, just the, the improvements being made, is not going to be enough money to do everything that we anticipate we'd like to do. And so the, the bottom line is, it's, it's going to continually to be looking at more taxes. And, you know, we, we sit here tonight and we know that, like you said, maybe an eight cent tax increase just for the borrowing of this start of the 21 and a half million dollars for the, the first phase of the school. And then when the second phase come along, we're going to, which will be even more money than the, the first phase, that's going to even be more. And we sit here and we look at the, the projections at, or the slide that Dr. Castle gave us, and where we stand at with our ratings for the teachers' pay. And, I mean, that's, that's a bad place to be sitting at, and it makes it extremely hard for the school to continue to retain their, their good teachers. So that in itself can be more tax dollars. And then when we give those raises, we, we have our city people looking at us going, we've got to live here and survive too, and we have to retain our employees. So when, when, when people look at this plan, and, you know, in a perfect world, it might be perfectly planned out, but for somebody to come, and as you said, this is not a two year plan, it's up to 20 years, and, and it's down the road. But I want everybody to be aware that when, as we go into it, it's, it's not going to happen overnight, and it's going to come at an extreme cost to the people. And, you know, the old saying, you can get what you pay for sometimes. I just don't like the insinuation that we haven't made improvements, and we haven't progressed, and we haven't done a really good job with where we've kept the, the amount of money that we've had to work with. And it just kind of insulted me, and that's the way I feel about it, so. And, and when I read this plan, it, it still stings to me. I mean, it's got some positives into it, and me and Vice Mayor have talked about it, but it's not written to the way that I would vote for it. So that's my discussion. Ford, anybody else like to interject?
Well, I would offer that, so this, this November, we will have owned a home in Waynesboro for 13 years. And in that 13 years, our house over in the tree streets and predates land records here in the city of Waynesboro. And I'd like to say, over those 13 years, we've made some pretty good investments in the house. We did a bathroom, worked on the family room in the back. We've kind of gotten ahead with some of the things. We've made some technology upgrades in a, in a, in a pre-Civil War home. And there's some things that, I tell you, my back is telling you this, so I told you a little project this weekend that I'm sore about, that, gosh, I started that project almost 10 years ago, and I finally got it done. Hopefully that doesn't make me a bad person, it just points out that, in everybody's home, in every situation, you've got catching up, keeping up, and getting ahead. And, and that doesn't make us a bad community, or not a progressive community, or folks that aren't looking out for the best interest of the city. I think it's just, it's an honest sort of thing of, you know, life's about choices, and priority setting, and revenue's about choices. And I sort of describe, I've said this before, I describe the comp plan as, as an honest document. It's kind of stings sometimes, but it's also very hopeful. It's very strategic. I look at, at, in terms of revenue, there's five sources of primary revenue in the city. You've got the real estate taxes that we all pay, your machine tool tax revenue, mills, lodging, and sales tax. With that real estate revenue that comes in that we all contribute to, every business owner, every landowner, every homeowner, that, it, it's, in some way, and this is sort of still an evolving sort of idea that I have, but almost looking at it in a way of how can we use the investment that we all contribute into our shared society, our shared community here, to stimulate and grow those other four sources of revenue? It's not always about taxing the homeowner, taxing the homeowner, it's about creating value so that our property values increase because we've made investments that make it even more attractive to start a business, or raise your family, or, or live in a home here in Waynesboro. So, again, I'm so glad I finally got that project done this weekend. But again, I, I, I certainly appreciate the mayor's sentiment, and, but I, I, he knows I'm the eternal optimist. I really think that this is a very inspiring document, and we're not going to be able to accomplish every single thing in it. There's only so much the community of 21,000, 22,000 folks can do. But I know that it's worth trying, and so that's why I certainly plan on supporting it.
I hope our assessors at home listening to all those improvements you've made.
What improvements? We talked about that.
Anyone else like to say anything?
Well, I'm, you know, I'm kind of follow up on something Mr. Shaw said, and some of the sentiments expressed by the mayor, and considering the Comprehensive Plan, I go back to the issue we just got through voting on, right before that, 21 and a half million dollars, which is only the first phase. And I guess... And I guess, I hope this council and future councils are able to focus on what the absolute priorities are and how many of those priorities we can fund. I don't want to see the city borrow itself into a financial, I can't even think of the word I want to use, but you understand what I'm saying? That, I mean, we, we can't have everything we want or would like to have, and certainly not right away. Some of these things will probably have to be accomplished over a good period of time, if they're ever accomplished. But to say, I won't be sitting on council when some of these issues come up and some of these expenditures will have to be considered. And, you know, even though I won't be on council, that doesn't mean I won't be interested in what's happening to a city that I've spent most of my life in up till now. And I hope that, you know, we can continue to move ahead and, and without, at the same time, being very prudent because the only money we have is what is taken from all our citizens. We don't have a council bank full of money that we can decide how much to spend or not spend at all or whatever. So, I just, you know, I like to emphasize that when we're, as we consider the Comprehensive Plan and what's ahead for Waynesboro in the terms of expenditures and so forth that are obviously going to have to be paid for.
Thank you. Is that all the discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. So, it carries 4 to 1. Item 7 is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating 105,000 from the VDOT Restricted Reserve to the General Fund for additional paving expenditures for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you're well aware that we participate in the Virginia Department of Transportation's Urban Maintenance Program, so we get annual allocation for maintenance of our streets and bridges. That, we receive those funds on a quarterly basis. And if we have unspent monies at the end of the year, when we usually get a payment, our final payment in June, then we set that money aside in a restricted reserve. We've just recently put our paving schedule out for bid. We've received bids back, and we need an additional $105,000 to cover paving that will undertake this spring and early summer. And so, we put this ordinance before you to accomplish that paving.
Thank you. Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
Some move.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. All ordinances introduced this evening will be considered at the council's April the 9th regular meeting. Item 8A is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a Title II Part A federal grant, grant in the amount of $8,000 to the school funds for salaries, benefits, and staff development expenses. Mr. Shaw?
This is a federal grant. I would suggest we appropriate the funds.
Any questions of Mr. Shaw? Is there a motion to introduce?
Some move.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Item 8B is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating Title I Part A federal grant in the amount of 25,000 to the school funds for salaries and extra reading support at Winona and William Perry Elementary Schools. Mr. Shaw?
Again, these are federal funds.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
Some move.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Item C is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a Perkins Career and Technical Education Grant in the amount of $7,780 to the school funds for the purchase of instructional materials for new classes offered at Kate Collins School and Waynesboro High School. Mr. Shaw?
Once again, federal funds.
Any questions of Mr. Shaw? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
Some move.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I'll let you. Item 8D is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating an Adult Education and Family Literacy Act federal grant in the amount of $16,654 to the school funds to be used to operate the regional adult ABE, the GED, the ESOL, and citizenship classes. Mr. Shaw?
Finally, federal funds.
Thank you. Or are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to introduce? Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Number 9 is communications, correspondence, and calendar. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a reminder that on Monday, April the 2nd, 9:00 a.m., we'll meet in this, the chambers here to receive the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2019.
Look forward to that and starting the week off with good information. Thank you. Number 10 is citizens' comment period.
Nikki Godier Martin?
If you will give us your name and address, please. There's a timer here that will come on. There'll be a green light, and you can go through your conversation. When it turns yellow, start winding it up if you haven't already finished. And when it turns red, please stop.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Nikki Gothier Martin. On the record, I wrote my mailing address, but I am a property owner here in Waynesboro. First, thank you for your service as members of city council to improve the community of Waynesboro. I have owned property here in Waynesboro for 11 years, and I have served as a teacher for Waynesboro High School for eight years. This year, I am also currently serving as president of the Waynesboro Education Association. I'm serving as Rosemary Wagner is taking leave of absence this year. I am grateful for the opportunity this role has afforded me in learning about civic duty and how schools and school boards and cities work together. As acting president of the WEA, my priority is to represent the staff and the faculty who serve in education. As a homeowner here in Waynesboro, I also have an interest in how the tax money I pay to the city is allocated. And I look forward to sharing my research and my thoughts with you during the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Ms. Bordle?
Yes, David Lingerfelter. Thank you.
Your name and address, please, sir.
David Lingenfelter. I'm, my current address is Verona, Virginia, but I teach here in Waynesboro Public Schools. I teach at Kate Collins Middle School. And I usually go by Mr. L, so if you all want to go by that, that's completely fine. But I'm just here to thank Vice Mayor Short and Mr. Freeman for coming both this year and last year to speak to my students in our eighth grade civics class. I always start my kids off in the year with this question, what level of government is the most important, federal, state, or local? Don't everyone all answer it once?
We have to say local.
I owe you a starburst. Congratulations. That is correct, but very good. And for my students who are watching this on YouTube, the vocab words you want to underline in your outline are annual budget, council, mayor, manager, superintendent, school board, ordinance. And make sure you have those, or else Mr. L's not going to give you extra credit anyhow. But I would just like to thank you guys for maintaining such a close relationship with the school, and I appreciate it a lot. There's no better way to show kids the importance of government than having the local government come in and talk to them. And I'm hoping that through our classes, especially Mr. Ryan Spence in my civics class, that we can really drive that point home that kids, especially today, now it's very relevant, can have an effect on their immediate world through especially their local government. So, I'd like to thank you guys for all that you do here, especially you, Dr. Castle. So, thank you all very much. I will not take up any more of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No others?
Is there a motion for us to adjourn then?
Some move.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.